I'm going to call this meeting of Gloucester Schools Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students that will be successfully engaged lifelong learners, and I'll ask you to join me. Thank you very much. The Plague of Angels.
The Lord.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic of States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with a degree in justice, law. Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is your opportunity.
You students?
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
Here's DL 10 Pilots Hill. I'm just here to do a little follow-up to my request from a couple of weeks ago where I requested that the school committee go over the city and ask for somebody to help the two turn around schools.
We are in the process of compiling lists of things that we put into last year's budget that were specifically aimed at those problems to supply, so they understand that we are paying attention to this.
Oh, great.
And we were going to ask the administration if they had any additional requests, but just in general, the city's policy is that they don't give us supplemental contributions.
But this is an emergency and it could come from like a slush fund or some type of fund that might...
Well, like I said, we can identify, if we have something that we deem is truly going to make a difference, we have a contingency in our budget, and so we do have some resources within our budget to do something if we get a request. It's not for us to decide, it's for somebody to ask for a specific...
Yeah, we need...
No, I know, we need the principal of high school, or maybe the school or something.
Yeah, the letter says if you could ask them what they need, and maybe...
We have other requests.
Thank you very much.
Comments from chair for us? There's two little items I just want to bring up. One is that the building committee meeting, the school building committee meeting that was originally scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled. And it has not at this point been rescheduled, but we will reschedule it next week, hopefully, if we can fit it in, if not, it'll be the week after.
I understand.
And the other thing is that if the city has in the process of investigating the Article 97 disposition, they have decided that they are going to use the East Gloucester site as the trade-off for open space for the compensation for Meadows Field.
Two years ago.
The whole thing?
The whole thing. It will be preserved as open space.
Wow.
Rightly stated.
That's wonderful.
I thought you might want to know that.
So just to be clear, for those of you who don't know what Article 97 is, because this is coming out of nowhere...
Well, Article 97 is an amendment to the Constitution of Massachusetts Constitution, and it provides for the protection of essentially open space in wetlands, not wetlands, but watershed is the main purpose, as well as forested land. So it has always been considered that it was about preservation of watershed and heartland. A recent ruling, a recent court case, has indicated that it can apply to any property that has been regarded by the community as open space. And to deal with that, what you'd have to do is you'd have to go get a vote from the city council to request that the state legislature take it up. It requires a two-thirds vote on a roll call vote at both houses of the legislature. And the guidelines, one of the guidelines, is that is equal of greater value property compensated, traded off, or whatever your continues.
Any other questions?
No.
You can ask me later, I'll answer later, just can't do it right now.
So this has to do with the property at Meadows?
It has to do...
This isn't information you had before, or decided to have, so...
It has to do, the property at Meadows is...
It's the school committee meeting, so I don't have to...
Well, we did discuss it when we voted to ask the city to do it. But the, it is to the two lots at Meadows Field, at the Veterans, those, that property was originally taken by the City of Gloucester, or given to the City of Gloucester, or bought by the City of Gloucester, none of those things are clear, from Cape Pond Ice Company in 1924. And at the time, it was a pond, a dam in a pond, and the pond would be flooded. It was the dam, it wasn't a natural pond, it was a stream running through there, and they would dam it off, and they would flood in the winter, Cape Pond Ice would cut ice out of there, and there was an ice house more or less where the school is, which is where the dam was. And later on, when they tore down the ice house, they built a playground on the dam, which is where the school is. In this summer, when it was, the pond was empty, they set up a baseball, a ball field. It was actually, it was originally a hardball field, they would have hit from, center field would have been where the school is. In the 30s, in the mid-30s, the citizens decided to dedicate the playground to Joseph Meadows, and they named it Joseph Meadows Playground. And when they built the school, they went to the state and got it, the land changed over to possession of the school.
Portion.
Where the school is. And the, which is also half of where the softball field is, too. The other part of the softball field was still as considered a playground. So this is the process, so that part belongs to the school department. For us to build a school, we have to have possession of both, of all property. Okay, so that, this is the process that we have to go through to allow that to happen.
Come on.
Okay? That's...
I think I heard that full explanation. I know, please, sir.
All right. You're not taking questions?
Well, I didn't know that oral communications was closed yet, so...
And so, when I'm working, so East Gloucester, the building comes down, is the building wise becomes field or trees?
Trees or trees or whatever the city...
Okay.
But it doesn't get built on again?
Doesn't get built on again.
Doesn't get built. Recognizations.
I would like to recognize the Gloucester High School Theater. All the performers and the stage crew and the director, Jessica Waddles Perk. I went to the production, I'm still, and it was just amazing from the production. The acting was superb, just the whole experience, the timing and everything, it just was really so well done. The kids worked so hard and really showed in the product that they put out, so I was very pleased to hear her close on for getting another great job.
I completely agree with that, I think it was very good. Anything else? Okay, and we're going to move on to our student advisory council. I'd like to introduce yourself.
Hi, yeah, I'm Asham Shatah, the treasurer of GHS, and I have some notes and stuff that we've been doing. So the Red Cross Blood Drive that's happening this Friday, December 6th, and it's open to staff and students ages 16 and up, and we're projecting to collect 38 pints. The Doc Siders Holiday Concert is December 12th at 7:00 in the auditorium. So winter sports, they begin this week with tryouts, and they'll begin regular season games as early as next week. If anybody's curious about the schedules, then you can check out the athletic schedules tab on the GHS website. All the GHS sports include basketball, ice hockey, wrestling, cheering, swimming, gymnastics, and winter track. The GHS Open House for middle school families was on Monday, November 25th. There were displays done by every department head, a parent panel for questions, a student panel about personal high school experiences and questions, and then tours for middle school students. It was a very great reaction from the families and students in attendance, and they all had great questions and comments. And then the last thing was from Kate, our president. She said, even though Kate was unable to make it tonight due to a winter sport conflict, she would just like to say thank you for all the generous donations that were brought to GHS for the English as a second language students. They're all extremely grateful for everything they have been able to receive during this COVID.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you know if they need anything else? I mean, I know they got a lot, do you, is there any way to report back, maybe at the next meeting, if there's something specific that they didn't get that they need?
Um, yeah.
You overwhelmed with so much, because I know a lot of people donate.
Yeah, for blood?
No, donations.
Yes, um...
Yes, um, the...
Quincoats.
Quincoats and stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We have meetings, I can double check to see if we, like, we always take donations, but you know, I can double check.
If you could generate a list or something, that would be helpful, because I know a lot of people want to donate, but they don't want to donate, over-donate the same item.
Yeah, okay.
So if you could come up with something?
Yeah, I can double check.
If there's a need for it, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, and welcome, and we'll see you again. You're welcome to stay, you don't have to.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, should I say hello?
If you want to.
I'll say hello.
You're allowed to deliver eight to me.
We have consent agenda, are there any items on consent agenda that any member would like to know?
I would like to agree with the Gloucester High School softball field trip, outside field trip.
Okay. And I would like to remove the donation from the tourist to the middle school for the horse in the D.C. trip. So, in that, we'll take up the field trip first.
Okay. We have somebody here from the boosters of the Gloucester High School softball team. Renee, would you like to, Renee Olson, would you like to say the introduction or information?
Hi, everybody. I'm Renee Olson, and I'm the year's softball boosters program president, and we have an exciting trip, hopefully coming up in spring for our softball girls. It's been a my annual trip that they've taken for the last number of years, down to what was formerly known as Dodger Town, is now the Jack Robinson Complex, and it's during April vacation, so it doesn't take any time off of school. And in the past, the girls have really had a great time here, they've done a lot of bonding, they've gained a lot of training early on in the spring season, and so that's what we would really like to see happen in the spring for our softball team that's coming up. And as of right now, we don't know what the roster is going to be yet, but we do know that the trip will be limited to two varsity and J.B. one softball players, ninth grade and up. So I guess I just, if you can have the approval?
Okay. I have a question. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I've planned on asking this question, I'm glad you're here to respond. So I was going through the application, I saw there's 10 to 25 girls...
Correct.
That could be going, and I looked at the chaperones, I think it was five?
Yes.
And four were men and one woman.
Yes.
So I'm wondering what your thoughts are on having 25, up to 25 girls?
So it was actually requested the coach to have a female chaperone...
Right.
Where it's a girls' trip.
Yeah.
And I'm perfectly fine with it, I mean, if there's a request to have an additional female chaperone, we can definitely accommodate that, that would be a problem.
I think I would feel more comfortable if it was at least one more female, because just of the nature of the situation, but I, I mean, I understand it would be a financial hit, too, if there is not a female interested to go, and I would encourage...
Well, I had a couple of other people that are on the boosters committee, and a couple of female parents have reached out and said if they needed additional chaperones, that they'd be willing to step up, so I don't think it would be a problem.
Because that was also an ask, too, as if any parents would want to travel to go down, that would be around, too, you know, that was my...
So they really, this particular trip, I mean, the parents definitely can come, and they can watch at the facility while we're training and practices and things and scrimmages are going on, but as far as the trip itself, is that it's kept combined for the students and the chaperones that are on the trip, because we don't want too much attention taken away from the purpose of why the girls are there. So, I mean, parents are definitely welcome to, you know, fly down on their own accord, you know, and stay in a hotel somewhere, you know, whenever their accommodations would be on their own. But all of the girls would be on the grounds of the hotel that is affiliated with the complex that they use each year for each and the other year for the trip, so we kind of keep it, they kind of want to keep it separated so the girls don't get too distracted away from, you know, the purpose of the trip. Parents are welcome to come down, of course.
Do you have softball?
Yeah, I'm a captain.
So have you been on the strip before?
Yeah, I went my sophomore year, it was a lot of fun.
Fun? Did it get you ready for the season?
Oh, yeah, I'd say it did, because in April especially, it's like kind of spill, like, winter, I think not winter, but like, the fields aren't as good as they would be like down in Florida, and we get a lot of good, like, rest, and we get to play teams from Florida, and they're really good, so yeah, I'd say it prepares us pretty well.
Do other schools come from other states?
Sometimes. I remember the year that I went, it was more like baseball teams that were down there, I didn't really see many softball teams, but the softball teams that are there, they work out and they like use the complex, so we'll play those teams. And then also, the Chinese Olympic team was there when we were there, so we got to watch their games.
So it's become, that's something that's been a great experience for the kids, to be able to participate and, you know, also watch, like she said, with the Chinese Olympic team. It's a lot of fun for them.
So we approve, so we have motion?
I know that we approved the Gloucester High School softball team state field trip. Second?
I want to make that motion to add another female, if possible, another female chaperone to hopefully two in total.
Yes, absolutely, and make sure that there's a second female chaperone included.
With objection? So the motion is to approve the field trip and request an additional female chaperone.
Just per usual, I'm checking the signatures, there's no superintendent, such superintendent signature on this, that, or support.
Exactly.
So if there's quite that tea for us, and I thought it was...
My aspect is that we have to come in straight and come to the school committee first?
And then you sign the national rights of permission.
And then if they're approved, they usually sign them, but if you want to change that, it's no problem to me.
Sure. I'm just reading the first paragraph suggests that signatures happen, and then the school committee, if it trips another out-of-state threshold...
No problem, look at it first, it's just they've always come and been doing it very like, happy to sign.
Well, it would seem to make sense that by the time it transfers, that it shouldn't sign up.
I read all the policies. I don't know how long it's been done this way, but I would change it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
And I pulled off the donation by Douglas Kerr, at least Madella Kerr, donation to the OMA D.C. trip, financial assistance to the amount of $2,500. And I would just, I only pulled it off so that we made sure that they were recognized and that we sent them a thank you letter.
That's good.
So there's a, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And consent agenda, we have motion to accept the consent agenda amendment.
So, second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's a means. And we'll move on to our reports and deliberations on educational issues. And first up is we have a presentation from Glenn Kutcher, the executive director of Massachusetts Association of School Committees, to discuss the superintendent's search process and what resources are available to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some materials here which I would like to share. One of them is a document that we provide to school districts that is a guide to thinking about what you do when your superintendency is going to be vacant and you need to fill a position. It's a very important decision, it's one of the most important decisions that will be made in your community over the next few years, so we want to help you think, as you will, quite seriously about this. In terms of the options of the school committee, I just want to lay out the general responsibilities and rights of the school committee. The superintendency is on the agenda for tonight's meeting. If you wanted to, you could appoint me right now. That's how much discretion the school committee has. It would be an act of political malpractice, and I wouldn't recommend appointing me as superintendent right now, but you have the authority to do this. You don't have to have a process, you don't have to do anything other than get a majority of the school committee to coalesce behind the campaign. That said, most districts look at this in the following ways. Number one, if you have someone in your school district who has been groomed, who is ready, who is interested, and who meets the approval of the school committee, about a third of our districts will generally appoint an internal candidate who has been prepared for the superintendency. And in the absence of other kinds of issues in the community, the community generally follows what the school committee, follows the will of the school committee and its leadership, provided everything is done in public, and that's option number one. Option number two is to consider casting a net to find a candidate for your superintendency, which you can do yourself, you can do yourself with technical assistance and assistance of service, or you can take option number three, and you can retain a search consultant who will assist you in greater detail in casting a wider net to find a candidate for the superintendency. I give you option one first, because the presence of an internal candidate will be known and will affect the size of your candidate pool. It's no great shame to apply for the superintendency in Gloucester and become a finalist and be interviewed in public and not get the job. It's no great shame, but it's no great honor either, and people don't want to be known as the person who wasn't hired here, wasn't hired there. So many districts, if they consider the option of conducting a search, will use the assistance of a superintendent's search committee. The search committee provides you with the advantage of being able to use the confidentiality of the executive session to do the initial screening and interviewing of your candidates. The attorney general has interpreted the open meeting law to be such that the school committee may not act as its own initial screening and search committee unless it wishes to do everything in public, and then you won't get candidates, because people want the opportunity to go through a private process before they're exposed publicly, exposed in a good sense publicly. As you know, when you become a candidate for the superintendency, like the superintendent oneself, or like the school committee, you become a public figure, which means that anybody that doesn't like you can have a free hand in social media and with the media in general to deal with that. So we provide arranged services to school districts that are looking for a superintendent, and many of those services are free technical assistance services, and they're all described in the materials I've provided to you. We are in a position to help you develop your decision criteria for whom you would like to have as your superintendent. The 11-by-17-inch single sheet there is a matrix of the scope of services that a superintendent might provide, and the perfect superintendent would exceed all of those standards. As you look for somebody to be the superintendent, you might want to think about what the district is looking for, what you're looking for in a leader, and think about some of the other factors that candidates will consider. You can put all of that into promotional material, which can be developed in a brochure, or it can be developed in a document, which we can assist you in doing, and we can put it out for the universe of candidates to see. Pretty much everybody who wants to be a superintendent of schools in Massachusetts looks for the vacancies in one of two places. They either go to our website, or they go to the Superintendent's Association's website. And posting the vacancies for your superintendent is a service that's provided to you as a member of our organization and as a member of the Superintendent's Association, and that's where people look. We get about 85,000 hits a year on people looking for the superintendency. The Superintendent's Association gets about a million hits, but they put everything up, including assistant superintenencies and principals and other administrative positions. So there's plenty of exposure, and we are in a position, as a member district, to distribute your vacancy to the 52-state school board, 52 state and territorial school boards associations, the superintendent's associations around the country, so that all of the associations will know that Gloucester, Massachusetts is looking for a superintendent, as will their members if they're looking in Massachusetts. If I were a superintendent in Jefferson City, Missouri, and I wanted to come to this part of the country to be a superintendent, either because I wanted the opportunity, or because I wanted to come home to a part of the country that I'm from, or I want to live by the ocean, whatever it might be, I'm going to call my state association executive director and say, "Tell me about Gloucester." And the first question I'm going to want to ask is, is this truly an open district? Is the vacancy truly open? What's the community like? What's the board like? What are the finances like? And while everyone has challenging finances, superintendents would be thrilled not to have to sell a bowling boat every year, as they do in most other states where county or where school districts are independent agencies. Many of our superintendent's candidates are shocked by the presence of the mayor as chair of the school committee, which is, the chair is usually on the school committee and most often, but not always, the chair. And having the mayor on the school committee, which I did in my service, I always thought was a terrific asset, because it requires the mayor to understand school issues, but he might be interested in doing that. Other parts of the country, that doesn't happen, so there's a little bit of adjusting. But we do, we do have some out-of-state candidates, not a lot, but some, but we do reach out to all of them, and many of them act as references or recruiters for other candidates. We also have the capacity to assist you in reference checking. We have the capacity to develop, as I said, we have a graphic designer on staff who provides those services to... those services to member districts if you wanted that kind of technical assistance. We can assist you in developing your search committee, we can help, we orient the search committee, and then depending upon the level of services that you want, help you with the rest of the process. So, that's all described in the materials that I've given to you. I think you have every expectation of finding candidates in whom you will have confidence. Every district has challenges and every district has trouble, but you don't have trouble in the sense that trouble, districts have trouble. This would be a good place to come. I know you have some schools that are in turnaround status and you're making progress in that regard, but this is not a district that people are casting aspersions on. The board has a good reputation, the superintendent is retiring under, an honorable retirement is the best way to go through a transition, because people will feel confident that the board will work with the next superintendent and be successful. I would welcome any questions that you might have, because this is where the school committee tends to, I want to catch up on the things that I may have missed. We've described in the handout the superintendent's search process. However, the process is readily adaptable to accommodate any specific concerns that the community has. If you want to have a large search committee versus a small one, if you want to invite all of your public candidates to come and visit the district for a day, meet the stakeholders, meet the parents, meet the teachers, and then interview the school committee, that's certainly an option. If you want to go and visit the districts where the candidates are, not all candidates are coming from districts where they are the company. Some have, some have been superintendents and left to go to universities and work, others became consultants and now want to get back into the field. So, there are a lot of reasons why people might not be in a city district, and you might find some non-traditional candidates who may be interested in being a superintendent that you might wish to think about. But remember, the search committee, if you have one, has the advantage of screening the candidates and deciding for the school committee whom they think you should see publicly and protecting the confidentiality of the others. Depending upon how big your search committee is determines how quickly your search can be expedited. It's getting to the point where in the searching year, the season is getting late, but you still have plenty of time to have someone onboard for the start of the next school year, depending upon when your vacancy will actually occur.
Thank you for coming, and I just want to say I've had a lot of experience with superintendent searches, I think this is part of my fifth or sixth one in the last 12 years, and all but one did we use MASC, and the one that I did participate in that we didn't hire you as a search committee, I actually, we actually used your materials and took advantage of your free services and found it to be very successful working with MASC. You kind of touched on what my question was, concerned about the timeframe, because in the past experience that I've had, we've always had more than six months. I appreciate the process where the school committee is not the search committee, because it brings in the community, it brings in more transparency, in my opinion, and it brings in the rigorous process of going through candidates. I think there was one point when Michelle and I flew to Virginia to interview people. So, we've done this extensive work before, and I can't imagine doing it without MASC. So, I'm really concerned about the six-month period. So, I have two questions. Can you talk a little bit about the timeframe and what you know about what candidates are available out there? I know there's that little secret society of MASC knowing who's kind of interested in leaving, but they don't tell their districts, and then you know about the ones that are studying that may not have the experience. So, what is your thought on who's out there for potential candidates?
We sometimes know that the superintendent is leaving before the school committee does. And we sometimes know that the superintendent is leaving before the superintendent does. So, candidates talk to us. Candidates talk to us all the time. They call us, they're referred by, we get a lot of referrals from the universities that train superintendents, we get a lot of referrals from retired superintendents who are mentoring people coming up, but we know who they are. Quite honestly, the size and quality of your candidate pool has less to do with who's assisting you with your search than it does with who you are. If this was a district where there had been corruption, where there had been some major problem that was not resolved to satisfaction, where you've had some extraordinary circumstance that reflects poorly on the district, that would be a real problem, but you're not, none of the negatives that attach themselves to districts are really applicable. That said, there are fewer people now who want to enter the superintendency. The first superintendent search I was ever involved with was 45 years ago, when I was a newly-elected school committee member, when 120 people wanted to be the superintendent of schools in Cambridge. Last time Cambridge did a search, of all, of all the candidates that they used and all the money they spent on a search consultant, there were only three candidates who applied, who really were ready to step up and be the superintendent in that community. And by the way, all three of them were referred to the district from us, because people call us and we say, "Call the district with the vacancies." People will find you, there just aren't as many as there used to be. And that's why we encourage school districts to groom the next generation of leadership and to consider that when you make a decision about what to do. And that's totally up to you, because you know what the community will want. We found is, and I have done no investigation about whether anybody in the Gloucester Public Schools is interested in ascending to the superintendency. That's not appropriate for me at this point, but we found that many districts ultimately give some preference locally unless there's really not someone who is available who would want to be the superintendent. What we're seeing is, in most of the candidate pools, getting somewhere between 18 and 25 candidates, of whom eight to 10 would be considered first-tier candidates, people that you would seriously consider. And then, once you might look at those eight to 10, the search committee might look at those eight to 10, and then figure out who would be the best fit for Gloucester, and then you worry about whether those candidates will still be around by the time your search is over. So, some of you may remember the old Hills Brothers coffee commercial where the coffee broker would talk about, "I only buy the best beans for my company," and, "What about the other beans?" And the broker says, "I sold them to somebody else." It's sort of what happens at the end of the year. You get the start of the next year's candidates, but you get the end of what hasn't been hired to date, and you don't have the same advantages that people who started out of the box in August or September have. But that said, there are districts that do very successful processes, starting as the sample indicates. So, you use the month of December to sort of organize your strategy for the process, you post in early January, close in early February, get to work with the search committee later in the month of February, expedite your interviews that get some finalists to the school committee by the end of February or early March, and then conceivably get a hiring decision completed by the beginning of April, unless the weather gets in the way. There are several districts that were interviewing candidates this week, and they lost two nights, and it's only December. So, your search could overlap two school vacations.
Just a follow-up question. Talking about internal candidates, what is your recommendation or your best experience when there are internal candidates? And I ask this because I've been on both sides and I've seen some problems with it. Do you see the district as taking a position to deal with the internal candidates first and then post? Or you post to the world to get everybody, and then, I know that there's, there's two sides to that approach, and I'm curious what your...
Every district struggles with the age-old question of, do we promote from within or do we seek from without? Or do we compare and make the best decision? This occurs just about everywhere. And by the way, this is a school district, because it's a school district, it's going to be a rumor mill, because there's no better place to get a rumor started than a school district, other than a prison, but a school district. And I guarantee you, there will be a rumor that the search is already set up for somebody, there will be a rumor that it's set up not for somebody, and I guarantee there'll probably be a rumor that one of the school committee members has the mystery candidate who's just waiting in upstate New York to come, and the deal's already been cut. These things happen, rumor control is important. But some, some districts go through a vetting process for their internal candidates first, and several districts have been very successful with this, going through a rigorous interview and sort of meeting with the stakeholders to determine whether those candidates or candidate would be an appropriate person to promote. And once that process is done, then they make a decision about, we will go forward or we will stop where we are. Just so that you understand, if in fact you retain a search consultant, and if you decide after interviewing internal candidates that this is where you want to go and you don't want to continue with the process, then you should expect all fees to be waived. Most, most, you shouldn't incur any costs until a search consultant incurs costs themselves. So, there's no, there's no cost implication in doing an internal screening, and through a rigorous interview in public with members of the community observing and participating, you might get a good sense of where you want to stop, while at the same time you do your preliminary due diligence to mount a larger search process if necessary. And then there are districts which will say, "We have some internal candidates, let's compare them in a big pool and see how we do." And then the challenge is that everybody knows there are internal candidates, and your pool will be smaller. So, I just throw that out to you, it's a challenge.
Yeah, Glenn talked about the search committee, and the school committee is under the confines of the open meeting law. Who would, well, who would be the makeup of the search?
Well, you may have members of the school committee on the search.
Just no quorum.
Just not a quorum.
Not a quorum on a subcommittee.
A quorum of the school committee should not be on the search committee.
What about a subcommittee?
If you have a sub, well, if you have a subcommittee of the school committee...
We have three of them.
To act as a search committee?
No, not act as a search committee. Let's say there's a quorum on a subcommittee on the search committee.
I don't think that will be a problem as long, I mean, if you have a quorum of a policy committee serving on the search committee, that's not a problem, it's different areas of jurisdiction. On the other hand, if you have a four-member committee, you want to make sure that you don't have four members of the school committee in the same room at the same time, that could be a problem. We do recommend that if you do have a search committee, two or three members of the school committee, there are seven of you, yes, so three of you might be well-served to be on the search committee, because some of the things that go on in search committees that may undermine the process tend not to happen when the school committee is represented. I say this because you're going to have a lot of stakeholders involved, and a lot of the stakeholders will have priorities that may not be yours. And I can guarantee you that in the, when we kind of aware that superintendent vacancy is in place, a number of stakeholders will begin mobilizing to attempt to control the process. And you don't want to lose control of the process, and when school committee members are observing from the inside, the process is much more likely to be, to be cleaner and more transparent at the end.
To be clear, it's one of the own things that we are by statute allowed to do.
Well, you have the...
It is our, it is our ultimate responsibility.
You have a responsibility to hire the superintendent, to set policy, and including in policy is the fiduciary responsibility to set the budget and to be the employer of record for collective bargaining. And through policy, you can get to a lot of places, but hiring the superintendent is ultimately the school committee's responsibility. So, when we orient a search committee, we remind them that the search committee is advisory to the school committee. Most school committees will accept a search committee's recommendation, unless they get the sense that maybe the search committee hasn't done its due diligence, but that's rare, but it does happen.
I have a question. You ran through a timeline which basically said we would be getting, if we were to move on this by the first of the year, because I think it's our intention to make a decision of how we're going to move forward at our next meeting, which is two weeks from today. But we will have two new members and two people leaving in January 1st, so that it was really just out of the direction that we would go. But you said that we would have possibly have screened candidates by March, is that what?
The, the search committee could begin immediately upon closing of the application deadline, begin to select candidates and interview them. For some reason which I never quite figured out, calls to the candidates to be interviewed are always returned very quickly. They're always available. It's very interesting. Even the Wall family, which interviewed their candidates on Sundays, never had a problem getting all the candidates to give up the patriots and be interviewed for the superintendents. Even the, even the coaches on the search committee would want to do that, so that was considerable. And then they can, if you, the school committee gives them a charge to move quickly but diligently, then you can keep them going and get it done.
So, so if, perhaps if, because of circumstances, we don't get candidates that we get excited about in March, February, March or April, would it be unusual for us to then go for an interim for a year?
Occasionally, searches don't work out for whatever reason. Sometimes the candidates get kicked off, sometimes the school committee just doesn't feel the candidates are appropriate. So, we have a lot of resources, documents that we can provide to you, and one of our documents is what you do when you need to go to Plan B. And Plan B has several strategies. One option is to go to those people who did not apply and say, "Okay, look, they did it, it didn't work out, would you like to come and meet with a couple of members of the school committee," which is perfectly legal, "and let them screen you and possibly bring you to the school committee to be vetted in a second stage of the process." Several districts have been very successful in hiring people who didn't necessarily want to take a risk and apply the first time. The second option under Plan B is to start over, and part of that strategy is to retain the services of an interim superintendent. If you do a search and the search is not successful, you can seek from the state a waiver to hire a retired superintendent, who is then allowed to work as your interim superintendent and collect the salary and collect the pension all at the same time. It's called Christmas all year long. So, there's no shortage of people who are willing to be interim superintendents, should that be necessary. So there's no shortage of people who are willing to be interim superintendents should that be necessary.
Don't, not to kind of understand my plan, sure. Could a retired superintendent be the one who's retired out of district? If you haven't.
Let me explain how it works. First of all, there are districts that have brought back their former superintendents to be interim superintendents. Those tend to work out quite successfully. There's a limit to what a retiree can earn in the absence of a waiver. So I don't think you can retire, again, I'm making this up. I don't think you can retire on September 1st and then be hired back immediately as a consultant. Because there's a limit to what you can do in a given year. But you could probably come back as early as January. However, you should just understand that my counterparts in the other New England states are begging me for the names of superintendents who are retiring so that they can come up to New Hampshire and Maine and Vermont where they're having a real hard time finding superintendents. So if anybody's interested in going to another state, I can, I can send Vermont a superintendent. We're, we're very fortunate. The other states are, the, the other New England states are experiencing serious problems in finding people who want to be superintendents. It's for a lot of reasons, not just the, the, the problems of trying to do everything you need to do with, with an inadequate budget. The fact that in Massachusetts, no matter how good you are, you're going to experience some technical form of failure. That's the way the, the accountability system was set up. Setting ambitious but unattainable goals and then punishing you for not making them has made it very difficult to be a superintendent. And with all the layers of regulation and mandates that have been placed upon it, a lot of, a lot of people just don't want to do it. And, and that's also why many candidates or many superintendents retire earlier than they might have a generation ago. A generation ago, most superintendents, most principals, many teachers worked past 65 to age 70, some even beyond. Now in Massachusetts, if you're 57, 58 years old and you maxed out on your pension, there's no incentive to keep working. So people leave early and quickly find out how bad daytime television is and then quickly look for, you know, another state to go to, to. It's really bad daytime television.
So we went through, you know, we used to, we hired rich and I thought the process was a really great process. Every, every, every step of it. Reminding what a typical makeup of a broader search committee usually entails.
Generally, some members of the school committee. Usually a couple of members of the faculty. Often someone from the teaching ranks, somebody from the administrative ranks. I, I am one of those people who just encourages you not to let the professional faculty members outnumber the citizens in large. Parents usually from the three different, you know, the elementary, middle school and high school. Frequently you see a representative from the very important constituencies that you might have, for example, a representative from the special education pack is sometimes included. A student is sometimes included and students do very well in search committees. And then sometimes there is a representative from the municipal side of government. Sometimes there is a, a representative from the business community. The ideal size of a search committee is like 11. And because I've said this on the record, I'm not going to hide from it. The, the ideal situation is when the chair of the school committee chairs the search committee. I'm sorry, but they hate me for this, but it just, you know, it just seems to work out. Or the former chair of the school committee.
I have a question about advertising a new website. Do you see that as something we should do right away? I know how you can put it at the bottom, searches, upcoming searches or something.
You can indicate, we'll become, look here for more information.
Yep.
Searches that are coming. And as I said, we, we will put your vacancy up and the superintendents will put it up as a member service, so.
Right.
Everyone will know.
Do you think that's something we should do immediately?
Well, you might want to let people know that it's coming. And a reason for that is your community may be among your best recruits. And if the community knows there's a vacancy sooner rather than later, they or your faculty or your former faculty make it on the phone and start calling people that they know and say, you know, I know you moved out to Indiana. Wouldn't you like to come back now? That's, most out-of-state candidates usually either, they come for a couple of reasons. Most of them come because they want to come back east or come back to Massachusetts. Some of them come because they're looking for a challenge professionally and they want to make a change. But some of them come because they've just retired and they want to come and do three quick years and, and leave again because they think it's easy. And you do want to be very careful about making sure that, that this is a destination superintendency. This should not be a place where someone goes to go somewhere else in Massachusetts. This should be a place where someone comes and commits and stays. Now, there, in the guide that I provided you, you have to be very careful about how you probe because you just can't say to a candidate, just how old are you anyway? Or are you close to retirement? Or what's your financial picture like? But you can ask, if your superintendency works out and we're all happy, will you still be here in five years? And that's when the middle school parents can look you, yeah, they can look you in the eye and tell whether you're telling the truth or not. That's another reason, by the way, we frequently have chiefs of police on the search committee. And they are very effective because they have the capacity to contact their fellow chiefs in other communities and get a good sense of what the candidate is like. They ask good questions and they're very insightful. Again, I don't want anybody angry at me for doing this, but, but in my experiences where we've had the chief or, or the student liaison, student security officer, it's worked very well. And regardless of what you do, we're at the other end of the phone and we are available for the technical assistance services if you want them or the other services if you want those.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions? Is, is our intention to make a decision on how we're going to move forward at our next meeting? I believe, and if we were to talk about whether we should just post this, you know, post the document.
So I didn't get the memo on being in the next meeting. Is there any way we can discuss the potential of putting a motion on the table to hire MASC tonight? Just because I think times are the essence. And they can start helping right away with the posting and finding out there's internals. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done. And even two weeks is a push-off because they're here in December.
Can I suggest something to you?
Yeah.
Because it's a no-fee service.
The beginning part.
You might want to start organizing what you're going to do and figure it out before you actually make a decision. You're going to have to do that anyway. And we can guide you through the organization process. I didn't come here with the intent of selling the service we came to topic.
No, I, and I appreciate that. That wasn't any message that I was trying to say. I'm just speaking from my past experience and knowing how much comes at you real quick. And knowing that we have two members that are going to be sitting up here in three weeks. I'm just trying to get the ball going sooner rather than later. But if you are thinking it's not an issue, I mean, I, I don't have an issue with not doing it. I just didn't know if it was something we could entertain tonight.
Well, we can, we can entertain.
If the committee feels comfortable. I don't want to pressure anybody, but at the same time, I think it's important.
Make a motion. Somebody has a question.
No, I, the, the question before us, and I, let me see if I can interpret what's to be said.
Rally the choice here.
That we, that, I think that we probably should notify MASC that we would like to have the position posted.
Do that.
You know, right away. And then we could also notify the Association of Superintendents the same.
You can contact us and look at this.
Yeah. So that's, that's something that we can do right away.
Do you think we need to have a salary range to advertise? Or can we advertise without a salary range and then update it once the finance committee?
Well, at this stage, I would say the only thing you need to tell the public is that you would have a competitive salary and full fringe benefit package. When you get to the point of hiring someone and negotiating around those terms, we have some additional information and, and just while I have you here, the first call the hired person is going to make will be to the Superintendent's Association. And the Superintendent's Association will provide the candidate with a model contract. You should never, ever sign that contract. We have a much better model contract that protects the rights of the school committee and will be equally fair. But we have a guide to contracting. It's got all the things that superintendents look for and the story behind the story and a lot of the benefits and how the benefits can be provided. And we have a model contract and we have other resources that are available to any school committee member. If you called me last year, I've given you the same documents. We also have some comparative salary information that we can share that we gather from school districts as part of our management information survey. And that's all available to you.
So that being said, I think I'd like to make a motion that we, we request MASC and the Mass Association of Superintendents to advertise the position.
So is it actually advertising or just putting a notice that it's?
Well, they do a preliminary advertisement and then update it with a, a more detailed one of the.
Once, once the information comes forward.
Next question.
Tony?
Yes, is there a second?
Yeah, I second.
So, we meet on the 18th. That means we're blowing off till second week of January. If we vote on the 18th to move forward with you. If we move forward, if we, if we today say that we are completely interested in signing a contract with MASC, would that benefit us in recouping a month, basically?
The reason it would not be a problem is because the, the month of December and January would be spent organizing, developing the materials and getting them out. So that stuff can be done very quickly. Even on the 18th. But if you, but I would suggest if the school committee wanted to think about looking at some samples and putting together material quickly and, and wanted some technical assistance from us in the meantime, that would be possible. You wouldn't lose any time. And then whatever you elected to do, you have the work that you've already done that you would have had for free anyways.
So, one of the things that we would, we probably would be looking to review our job description, correct?
Yes. The job descriptions tend not to change much. You might look at whatever you have as a job description or look at the superintendent's evaluation tool, for example, to, to establish what your goals might be and how that can inform the process. The chart that I've given you gives you some indication of some of the things that you might look for. If there's anything special, and Waltham is building a new high school. That's their number one priority. Some of the schools are, some of the districts are looking to.
Building elementary.
Build relationships with the faculty that may be impaired. Others are in financial crisis and are looking for someone who can manage money and deal with crumbling infrastructure, whatever. Some things may be unique to you and those, those should definitely be part of your process. Also, if you, if you, just send me an email. I can send you electronic samples of lots of different district brochures to give you an idea of what people put out. Well, the key will be describing your community in a way that's attractive to candidates. Letting them know that a fair compensation package is going to be available. And giving them a sense of how big the district is and how many faculty members you have and what the budget is. That, you gather that a day.
So those are all the things that we need to start doing anyway.
So we're still in the session on the motion.
Yeah.
If that motion is solely about asking MASC to post.
Advertise.
Yeah, right. To say, this is a, not hire anybody, we're not taking a path or just saying, hey, could you please let the world know?
And that's the motion. So without further discussion on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. And we'll be in touch and we'll be gathering information and disseminating it to the committee so that we have by our next meeting, we're talking about what we're going to do.
Can I?
Things where.
Can I ask a moment?
Sure.
So, but our last meeting, Melissa brought up, you know, she brought up tonight about the fact that, you know, your timeline says, yeah, we can pull it off despite that push-starting happening in the school year. But sometimes it's nice to have a longer period of time which will require an interim while we go through that process. Do you find that the hiring of an interim has any tangible negative effects? Do you find districts suffer because there's, you know, double transition and things like that or?
Everybody's on their best behavior during an interim superintendency. Those who aspire to promotion will be exemplary. Those who might not, don't want the interim superintendent telling the new superintendent, watch out for this one or that one. So, we found that, that people do very well under interim superintenances. The other advantage that an interim superintendent sometimes has is that sometimes the interim superintendent can also manage your search process depending upon where you are. And if you're looking at doing a dis, doing a search with technical assistance, see, sometimes the school committee doesn't want the superintendent anywhere near the search process. They throw him out. They don't want any of the applications or any of the applications or there's some bad feelings, whatever it is. Or, or mistrust of the central office, whatever it might be. But when, but that's less a problem. And with an interim superintendency, you have that additional possibility that that person could be an asset during the search process if you were too late. And remember, you have Plan B. And whatever you decide if you elect a search consultant, that search consultant shouldn't get paid until you have a signed contract with a permanent superintendent.
So the issue.
And if that superintendent leaves within two years, they should do it again for three. I know I've done it three times.
So we put it on the table. I think the issue, I think, and you brought it aside at our last meeting, was whether we wanted to go with a search or with a. I think that's the question that I thought we would be talking about at our next meeting.
Was it you're going to go subcommittee first, right?
So I'm a little confused because this was referred to subcommittee, but here we are, which I think this approach was good tonight to have Glenn come in and tell us all so that we can realize that this is a very large undertaking. And there's a lot of things that we haven't touched on tonight that we have to get the ball going on. So I hear you say that we're making decisions at our next meeting. So I'm just wondering what it is we're doing and how you expect to get there because it just seems to me, from my experience, there's a lot to do. But I also know that MASC will come in right away, even if we don't turn to a contract with them tonight and help us. But I'm not hearing a real plan and this holiday is coming up. Hearing an 11-member search team means trying to organize 11 members to meet. There's so much to this process. I just don't want to.
Well, you don't need the search team, you know, next week.
No, we don't, but it's what I'm saying is it's fine.
I think the question before us is whether we're going to go with an interim or we're going to go with a search.
I think we need to find out if we have internal candidates first and look at that process.
We'll add that.
Okay.
We need to find out if we have internal candidates. We need to decide whether we're going to go.
With an interim.
An interim or with a, and I will. An interim or with a, and I will.
Or a search.
We will report out in our, in our next meeting whether we have internal candidates.
So how will we get to that point?
Yeah.
I mean, this is a group discussion, so you're saying at the next meeting, so what are we gonna do as a group? How are we discussing finding out how this is gonna be internal candidates?
We'll say to the school department in general and all of our potential internal candidates, if you'd like to be an internal candidate, contact me.
So we advertising it somehow?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we talked about internal candidates, right? I mean, where are we?
So maybe a letter from the chair of the school committee that we discussed and putting out a letter to the staff that we're welcoming any internal candidates to go over. As opposed to just hearing your ask from the meeting and then.
Right, no, I'm not, we would be more, more careful than that.
Okay.
But just do it.
Okay.
And then do you keep having this as a either or situation? Obviously, even if we go with an interim, it'd be interim then search, not, you know, not, we can do a search or we do, we're doing interim.
Yes, right.
Then we need to take some breathing room.
So while you're here, correctly if I'm wrong, we've had an interim here before. We had Joe Connolly and we did a search to get an interim. So it's not like we just call somebody and they're here.
Actually, if you were looking for an interim superintendent, you could just bring them in.
And we interview them individually.
Yes.
That we do our own search committee and have a couple of interviews with them, yeah.
Mr. Connolly, who was out last year recovering from back surgery, is now fully rehabilitated.
He is. What about her with me, is he still there?
I think he could be here tomorrow.
So this can take something for an interim, we would just interview them directly if that's.
We can do that.
You, you talked about subcommittee, like subcommittee. At the last meeting.
Yes.
So we did discuss it, B and F, above the funding.
We talked, we referred finding to B and F.
Okay.
And is there a point to, to send it to personnel to? What would you do? Just draw a, a sort of a template of what needs to be done?
If you are gonna refer this.
But we could just do that to.
If you're gonna refer just to personnel, I'm gonna ask the MASC come in and sit with the personnel subcommittee because that's part of their service before we even enter into a contract with them. Have a discussion on what we need to do, what are the priorities, what are the next steps? And pull it back to the committee and then have a plan.
Give it.
That's what I.
Who knows the recommendation?
Huh?
Who knows the personnel recommendation?
On, just supposed to, yeah. I mean, someone's gonna do that.
Say, we pull this off this year or we think we should pump the brakes.
Right.
Can we do that between now and.
I know I'm a bit, but I don't see any downside to moving forward with a full superintendent search and then, you know, pull this, the interim trigger later. I mean, I see no downside to that.
So I, I don't know, I may, and you may have acted on this to the contrary. I feel like the, the Sieve Gloucester School Department, we have a hard time stopping trains with looking on the track. I would be shocked if we had to enter a superintendent search and weren't happy and had the ability to say, hey, we're hiring zero.
Oh, you can do that.
I know we can do that, but I feel like in, in, it seems, I'm surprised. We put a lot of energy into something, we seem to just end up with a result. And so I'd be, I'd be nervous about putting that train on the track going, well, if we have to bail out the AM, we'll bail out the AM to get an interim. I feel like we would end up looking at the, the thought and redo this all over again and maybe take a superintendent that we were like, nah, you know.
For the moment, for the moment. We're gonna, I think we'll refer to personnel subcommittee to draw up a plan of how we proceed, a recommendation, whether we go with interim or, or search. And I will, and I will take, I will take responsibility for determining if they're viable interim candidates.
Why?
I will, I, I, what I just said is it will advertise that we're, that they, you know, people may wanna just contact somebody, they don't wanna just announce it.
They can, if we hire MASC, they contact MASC and MASC brings it to us.
Okay.
And then you redo, that's later in the process when you get applications and MASC will sit down with a group and go through and determine who's viable.
Well, I only said that because you said, said that we should find out whether we have internal candidates.
Oh, why, oh, internal.
That's what I said.
I missed the word internal, sorry.
Okay.
Like, well, how do we get that?
And all I said is we'll find out if we have any internal candidates.
I missed the internal word, I thought you were.
Okay, all right, all right. I think we're all set. You'll be here on, Melissa. The YMCA.
Nice week.
Oh.
This would have to be the week.
Yeah, it's a busy week.
It is a busy, busy week.
You don't have to do that this morning. Before we. The YMCA is not gonna be here, we're gonna re-schedule for the next, our next meeting. And we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one, we will be creating an advanced engineering adult job training program here at Gloucester High School on November the 21st. Through the auspices of General Electric Foundation as well as the state, there is a 2.5 million grant, which was matched by $2 million from the state as well, to launch specialized training programs at Lynn Vocational Technical Institute, Gloucester High School and Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School. And what this means is that, as I said there, we're, we will be in the process of developing a job training, adult job training evening program in advanced manufacturing. We had a couple of representatives, one, the executive director from the North Shore Workforce and Force Investment Board, and the second person, a person by the name of Brian Norris from Northeast Advanced Manufacturing Consortium. Both came, toured the facilities, saw the work that's been done since we had received the Capital Skills Grant for $500,000, two or possibly three years ago. Deemed in their judgment that the facilities we now have is adequate for such a program, made that recommendation to GD and on November 21st it was announced. The, our CVTE teacher, adjutant by the name of Mr. Coy, has expressed an interest in teaching position. So it appears though all will be in place for this to occur. I don't know the date when it will be happening, I don't know how much money will be allocated, but we have been assured that, that the support for that sort of program is in. Item number two, Student Opportunity Act update. This is the work that the state legislature has been working on with respect to modifying Chapter 70 to increasing revenue for school districts to the tune of approximately $1.5 billion over the course of the next five or so years. The update's more or less translated into a hurry up and wait kind of situation. They're collecting data with respect to calculating state aid allocations and local contributions. Hopefully that we'll have some fixed numbers come January. They've made a change with respect to low-income census. Over the last few years, they have been using a 133% threshold for economically disadvantaged. They now have gone back to an original figure, which is families at or below 185% of the federal poverty line will now be eligible to be calculated for curfew accountability for low income. We've spoken about special education and out of, out of district, special education transportation is now part of the circuit breaker in FY '21. They will be reimbursing around 25%. We know that under the best conditions, normal circuit breaker costs are, come in at 75%. The transportation portion, at least for FY '21, is going to be at, at 25%.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
I loved your subject, of course, appropriation department in there, but is this added to the tuition itself so that then that takes some of them that are below that threshold of four times?
I, I do believe that's the case, so if somebody's.
And then they carve out that piece that's more, basically 25% on that.
So, right, so let's say the, the tuition is above, it's a qualified for circuit breaker, so whatever that is, they'll pay 75% of the tuition.
That's a lot.
And transportation, yes, and transportation on top of that, they'll be 25%.
Now, does the transportation piece have that same threshold of four times?
It's added into the overall cost of, with the tuition.
So it's just.
It's cumulative.
But then they carve it out as 25%, so we need two separate formulas. Okay.
The, the new information.
So I understand the visiting, but still it's a 25%.
Into FY '21.
Yeah.
I think it's, hopefully, I think that's gonna increase.
So I, I think you may have asked it a little bit differently at the beginning too. So if somebody is just under the threshold of not qualified for circuit breaker.
Will the transportation break the total threshold? Our understanding that the answer is going to be yes, but it would be, if it's the transportation, we would only receive 25%. Better than, not 25%.
Based on.
It's what, somewhere around 50,000 or something to reach?
Yeah, twice.
Forty-six, it's the forties.
It's the aggregate people, people cost times.
And a lot of our students have gone, so as you don't reach that threshold.
It's around 38.
It's not a pay with the transportation.
Kick it, yeah. Lower that threshold.
The new piece, which is interesting, is the Department of Ed calling for what are referred to as district evidence-based three-year plans. We've been working on a district improvement plan on an annual basis. We're a lot carries over, plus we add new things based upon need. We're now getting a more prescriptive guideline from the Department of Education where we will be required to develop, as all districts will, three-year evidence-based plans to address persistent disparities in achievement among student subgroups. And in developing the plan, we really need to bring in as many stakeholders as we possibly can. Parents, community stakeholders, CPAC, Special Education, Parents Advisory Council, our English Language Learner Parent Advisory Council, school improvement councils, educators. This is going to be a broader, more democratic type of process. The Department of Ed is going to be prescribing a form and a template. We'll probably get a look at that sometime in January. And the expectation is that these three-year plans will be developed by April 1st of 2020. Some of the things that are outlined in the law, A, establishing targets and outcome measures for addressing persistent disparities in achievement among student subgroups. Identifying B, specific evidence-based programs the district intends to implement to effectively reduce these disparities. I'm hoping the state's gonna be helping us out with some of that. I think we have some stuff in place that we're looking at, but I'd be curious to see what the state's gonna be offering. Outline how Chapter 70 funds, as well as any other local, state or federal funds, are going to be used to specifically implement the plan, including school-level spending and resources for selected student subgroups. So we had talked a little bit earlier about support. I think Miss Steele had brought up the issue of support for the turnaround plans. We recently applied for a $30,000 grant, $17,500, which would go absolutely high school for, for supporting their particular plan. How that money is going to be used is something that would be specified in the, in the plan that we have to submit. And so we're in a position where we'll get started in thinking in terms of our district improvement plan, but knowing that it has to be broader, it has to be more broadly represented and we have to expand it now to have a one-year ongoing end. We'll plan a two or three-year plan and we'll make preparations for that. There's some other language about grant programs. There's 21st Century Education Grant Program, which apparently is going to be made available, which is a competitive grant program to help districts achieve the narrowing of the disparities between the various subgroups. So maybe they'll send some money at district's way. We'll certainly stay on top of that and see what is available. So that's the big news as far as the Student Opportunity Act update, it's this new plan. Item number three, on December the 14th, the Gloucester High School is going to be having a gun forum, a public discussion. The title of this is a public discussion of emotional and serious national issue. We were contacted a few months ago by the League of Women Voters and they are interested in sponsoring a discussion on guns. This is going to be, I think, what I wrote is it's going to be scrupulously bipartisan. There's no intent here to sway. This is an open, democratic, reasonable discussion. There'll be representatives discussing gun owners' rights. There'll be representatives discussing the need for gun control and community safety. Again, this is being organized by the League of Women Voters. We do have about a half a dozen of our high school students as part of their social studies project that are working and helping with the advertising logistics and even doing some background research. December 14th is the anniversary of both the Sandy Hook and the Simon's Rock College School shooting. So there is some significance to the date that has been chosen. I think it's a Saturday, if I'm not mistaken. And then there's the list of this time of year's calendar of upcoming events for the, for the camera. On December the 6th, Veterans Santa movie night at 6:00 PM. On December 7th, Beeman is having a character breakfast at 8 o'clock to 1 o'clock with Santa, as well as a tree sale. So if you wanna see Santa, go to Beeman on the 7th. On December the 8th, GHS is having It's a Wonderful Life, a radio play at Hammond Castle at 6:30 PM. On the 16th of December, the West Parish O'Malley Band will be performing at 1 o'clock. On December the 16th as well, Plum Cove will have its holiday concert, K-2 at 10:00 AM and grades three to five at 1:30 PM. On the 17th, both Plum Cove and West Parish will be having a holiday sing-along and a winter concert respectively at Plum Cove, K-2 at 9:00 AM, grades three to five at 10:30. At West Parish, K-1 at 5:30 PM and grades two through four at 6:30. On the 18th, East Gloucester has its holiday concert, K-2 at 9:00 AM and grades three to five at 10:30. And on December the 18th, O'Malley will have a holiday concert at 6:00 PM. And then on the 19th, in one day, the Doc Siders will be performing at Plum Cove at 8:45, at Veterans at 1:15 and at Beeman at 10:15 AM. And last, on December the 20th, West Parish Holiday Sing-along will take place at 10:00 AM. So Gloucester Public School District is getting into the holiday spirit and will be very well represented by its arts and music departments.
And I believe you said, our student program has said that Gloucester High School has an event on December 12th.
The last one is.
That's Doc Siders.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions of the superintendent?
I'm gonna wait to have the superintendent's report. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll move on to committee reports. And we have just the one of the finance subcommittee met on November 20th. Mr. Girls.
Yeah, I'm trying to find a couple of motions.
There are a bunch of motions that came out of it that are downlisted under action.
All right, yeah, all right. Anyway, I'll stop the report. So we. So vape detectors, James came in and so did Grant in the IT department. These can be wired in, they can get their electricity through the ethernet. The cost, I think we figured approximately it'd be about $16,000 a year per school. And they have a shelf life of three years. That was going with about 60% of live and 40% of dummy heads that could rotate through. We authorized Grant to go to the vendors to get trial vape detectors.
That's coming up for vote.
Yeah.
We, we recommended the four committees.
Yeah, actually, I don't, do that even need a vote? So I think he's doing that, but then does. And so we'll see what happens there. The, the assistant superintendent sent out an interesting thing. I didn't read it fully, but you probably all should get it at some point to look at about the workarounds that kids are doing. And some of the local districts are finding a reduction. They're also finding that kids are taking up tobacco now instead of the late ban. So long story short, we're trying to install a couple of pilots and from there, you guys will hear about it again. So it doesn't, it's not cheap, you know, to do both schools would be about $32,000 a year.
Is that licensing fee, why is it?
Licensing fees, yes, maintenance.
And how much work, like, you know, you're talking about dummy heads.
How much work, like, you know, you're talking about dummy heads who are rotating, or what's the, what's the demand per week on staff to be rotating? Is it janitorial, is it maintenance, is D W, who's rotating his hands?
That's something that's going to have to be worked out. I would think there would probably be administration of the school. Or I T. Or I T would go in and, and, you know, just every so often change a head.
There'd also have to be some protocols about how.
Yeah, yeah, there'd have to be a whole.
How it's dealt with when.
Yeah.
I mean, other schools are doing this, so it's not like with.
So that's, that's where that, um, it aligns right now is just with a couple of pilots. It's, it may not be something that wants to be pursued. So we're treading carefully there. Uh, C O detectors, um, as everybody know, there's no, um, code requirement because there's no, you shouldn't be in the building, there shouldn't be. The place to put them would be in the, uh, oil rooms. They're all, except for one, um, are gas, which is the main culprit with C O. It's gas, oil is far less, um, uh, likely to produce it. What does produce it is very, is poorly maintained equipment is how you get C O done. And, um, D P W is taking much pride in actually now keeping these things working because of, they're responsible, they own it. So they're keeping them working. So the likelihood of, of the creation of C O is, um, is something. But again, uh, a cost benefit, for no better word, analysis on that would be, if there is, they do have, um, there's probably, you know, a ten percent false alarm that goes with these, and that would mean that as soon as someone hears that alarm, fire departments call and school could be evacuated. So that's something also, we took no action on it, just that's the information that we have to share. You know, it's not in code for a reason.
But taking no action and waiting on additional, is that, that's, that's table?
Yeah, I'm leaving it up to the committee if they want to take more action or pursue it further. Um, I myself would not, uh, not recommend moving forward on it. Um, there was some, um, while we're in the meeting, we did look up a little bit about, um, how many incidences of C O problems in the state or in the nation. In the nation, there were reported from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve, there was nineteen incidents of C O problems in, in the nation, in schools reported. Now, one else, you know, that's, you know, again, uh, very, very scant, kind of dull, but. Um, but you will probably wind up on every call getting evacuation of the school.
Can I ask questions? Did you get any from the fire department at all during any conversations?
No other, but, um. What I, uh, offered to get that information from Fire and from D P W and to bring it to the next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that was, that was the, that conversation. And then. Since I can't write, clean right all the time. Oh, we, um, Jonathan, myself, and the CFO went to the high school to look at a couple of, um, issues that were there. One was the, uh, water jet cutter that's now in the, um, engineering room. It's off the machine.
Three D.
No, it's not three D, it's, it's, it's the water jet cutter. That requires, um, a sump to empty into. Uh, they had water pipe to it, but there's no drains anywhere near it. So it's either they're going to have to put some temporary catch and then dump buckets or something. It was very, when they got the equipment, it was just not very well thought out. Not sure where the equipment came from, but there's no drain that's at all available close by, not even quoted. So they did have it up in the classroom. Um, and the teacher said it just made too much noise. If we turn it on, it, you know, it runs, so it's done. You know, that may transcend a couple of class times, so. It doesn't seem to be a particularly integral piece of equipment, but it is a nice piece of equipment. But they, they need to find a different location that has a drain near it. Uh, where it is now, there's nothing we can do to accommodate it. And then there was the, today, we're going to get to this a little bit, uh, later, the cafeteria equipment, but there's also the prep tables. Um, have drawers, the, the slides, the stops are broken on. Um, we inspected those. The next day I went and picked up a couple of the slides. We have a, uh, a work order with, uh, J and L Welding. I took it up to them sometime next week. I will revisit them again and try to get little taps welded on it. It will fix all of those. That should be, you know, to this, at least a half a dozen of these, you know, they're, the stainless drawers come out. I don't know if you ever work with a drawer that doesn't work right. It's extremely frustrating. And they have at least a half a dozen high school, I don't know, but imagine it's the same thing. So we'll get that taken care of. And there was also a complaint that the, um, steam tables were not holding water. Um, when I went back the next morning, um, before they started work, uh, with the slide to put it back in, uh, I checked under the drain pipes that are over the floor drain, and they were completely dry, so it's evaporation, so. There's no problems here, so we took care of that. The lights at West Parish have not been shutting off. That's a, and they, they, uh, well, it's just what we discussed, and that's the company there. The D P W is getting, is on the company to get there. May be fixed, may be ready by now. I just wanted to let you know that that was not forgotten about. Those opening-closed tickets. We, um, we might go to, uh, lunch. Lunches were, uh, collection was better.
All the rest of the stuff that we've been.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's fifty-eight hundred for the last month was the, the, um, if anybody's familiar with this. Um, that's a pretty good number. Uh, you're always going to have, uh, a debt because people are always going to be a little bit behind because these are more like a credit card than they are an A T M card. And it's just how it's. And, uh, that was it. Uh, would that be the motions that came out of the, uh, came out of it.
Okay. All right, so we, uh, move on to action, and we have a number of grants, uh, to accept. And firstly, the Gloucester Education Foundation grant in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for the Gloucester High School Pilot Project, engaging students in collaborative. I assume this is requested by the principal?
Uh, it's, uh, was generated by a social studies teacher, uh, on the purpose of promoting students working together, essentially a group of whiteboards, I think with seven of them. Uh, students can work in groups, they can put the whiteboard up and keep notes of what they're doing. And all the rest, it's been granted by the Gloucester Education Foundation.
So the motion.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Uh, the second is the Energy North Incorporated Grant in the amount of five hundred dollars for Gloucester High School, uh, still remember it's the, uh, from Exxon, all of those people in the bottom, department.
For the poster.
For the poster.
That we accept the Energy North Incorporated Grant in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Just, I mean, last year, good forever, not as far as the right now, like, approved enough. Location, Gloucester, right? Does that have to go back up to, like?
Don't have to go through that again.
So the poster goes where the last poster went?
Which is probably in a corner roll though.
Yeah.
It's on the wall.
It's on the wall, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. And the third is Commonwealth Massachusetts, uh, Cultural Council, Big Yellow School Bus Grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to the O'Malley Innovation Middle School. I believe this is to subsidize, uh, the cost of buses for field trips.
Right, Peabody. Peabody Museum.
Peabody to the Peabody Museum.
We do accept.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have a number of, um, motions that came out of, um, Building and Finance. And the first one they touched on is to direct the I T director to pursue a pilot program for vape detectors at Gloucester High School. This is, um, at, at our meeting, uh, Grant Harris, um, indicated that he thought the manufacturers of these vape detectors may in fact, they can use one for a period of time, um, on a trial at no cost. And, uh, he would be willing to, um, play with it and set it up just so he could report out whether it works. So that was just, um, to allow him to do that. We have a motion sound.
Second.
Any drive, uh, discussion?
So my question would be, if I heard from the report, these are powered by, um, powered, so the Ethernet. Uh, I assume you don't have network cable running the bathrooms, is that what I was saying? Like, does it have, like, ticker in the office, is it, you know, with, no, in the hallway? Where they have network cables or, or?
Yeah, he, in discussions with D P W, D P W said they had no problem filling a hole to go into the bathroom and so that they could run the wire, like they run wire all the time. They'll pick a bathroom that's close to a junction box. Yeah, and D P W said they had no problem.
This will be a test in the field.
Exactly.
So he can report back, give us an idea.
And, you know, if kids get caught vaping in that bathroom, they can show up.
With the wire hanging down.
So, um, we're going to move on to the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Uh, the second is to request the elementary appropriation, uh, supplementary appropriation of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and three dollars from Closed Down School Committee Revolving Accounts earmarked for replacement of food service equipment. As you remember, um, when, um, uh, the CFO, um, did this, um, the city auditor felt that that money should fall into last year's, um, surplus, and therefore, um, we have to ask for it back, uh, in a supplemental appropriation. So that would be the process to pursue that process and process. And, uh, later on, we'll be going, if we get that money, to use it to replace some, uh, equipment in the, um, cafeterias. So we have a motion.
And we move that we request a supplemental appropriation of two, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and three from the Closed Down School Committee revolving accounts earmarked for replacement of food service equipment.
Second.
It should be that we request from the city.
From the city.
Any, can you, what?
Yeah, discussion.
Any discussion?
I don't think that the city's closed its books yet, so this money's not available yet. It's usually early November, uh, the little holdup I guess. But not, not from this side.
Well, that, that can't stop us from asking for it.
Right.
That's what we're doing. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Uh, the third is to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for replacement of food service equipment from the following sources, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and three dollars from, um, supplementary appropriation, seventy-six thousand ninety-seven dollars from the retiree health insurance, and fifty thousand dollars from the unemployment accounts. I believe that we had some discussion about different, um, uh, sources for this money, but.
There was discussion about adding twenty-five thousand out of the contingency fund, which that would be changed at this junction with, with, oh, well, I guess we need a motion and, uh.
You will.
No.
I'll move the, I'll move it as discussion.
Second.
So.
It's unfortunate that we didn't put forward the actual, because we needed a list of equipment. Um, make sure that probably pushed forward here. Uh, you guys got it all in the B and F, that's when you got the B and F, and so you were, you did have it. Um, and it's been prioritized. It was over two hundred, two hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars of this type of equipment. That was, um, was required. Um, another thing is, is in discussions with the, with D P W, um, Michael, Joe Lucido, and Mark Cole, if we can schedule this correctly. Um, the vendor that we use for installing a lot of this stuff, Cannibal Air, and then we need plumbers for the gas things that need to get put in, but, um, uh, it, uh, it's very expensive to use the vendor, and if we can schedule it, we, we could work with the D P W to have their tradespeople do this on Saturday. It would be overtime, but it would still be considerably probably half the amount of money for installations. So, um, that's something to think about when you're moving forward, that they, that they're okay with that. It's just they need, you have a schedule, they, they could also schedule, you know, laborers to come in for removal and things like that too.
So are you saying if we approve this motion that's on the table, that we can stop, we can reach out to D P W to stop scheduling?
Yeah.
Well, we got, we, we, we've got to get the equipment, some of this.
Well, you got, you, you can't, you can just buy it off the shelf.
Okay, but this is an immediate happening, we approve this motion, the purchase goes out.
Probably, more likely would be looking at maybe February or April vacations to install some of this. But, but just do it, just to backtrack a little, this, this issue came up, um, at B and F when we were reviewing the income, uh, of the, um, food service, uh, and the number of meals that they were serving and, and what they were, uh, and there was a, a drop-off that we were concerned about. And when we brought in Martha Jo, um, she, um, explained that they, she was not able to do the offerings that she would like to do because her equipment doesn't work. Uh, to the point where of the, what is it, the six ovens at, um, at the high school, only three of them work.
And marginal.
And even they don't work well, so that consequently, uh, doesn't, um, allow them to, to put things out that would be more appetizing to the students. And so that, that's when we asked her to go back and give us a list of, of, of the equipment that needed to be replaced, and she came up with a list, um, which, you know, with installation was an excessive, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. We then, um.
Right.
Decided on the, um, um, looked at the list and came up with it, um, but it's still not. This is to, uh, basically to direct the, um, CFO and the Food Service Director to pers- pursue, um, uh, the incremental replacement of, of equipment that is not working in the cafeterias.
So, yeah.
Tony said the list was in the B and F.
Yeah. You know, it's, uh, go ahead.
How old are the stores at the high school? You know, when you want to. Had to get the.
Three double-deck ovens at, um, at the, uh, high school, um, sixty-eight hundred apiece. And then steam tables at O'Malley are not functioning, they're bordering on violations. That's fifty-five thousand for steam tables. Um, and they need two, um, they need two of the ovens also. Beeman needs one of the ovens. Uh, so this, this is just.
Just a long time.
It's, it's a day, there's a big list and, and it's been, yeah, it's, Plum Cove needs it on them.
So I want to, I kind of want to get back to what I was trying to touch on earlier. D P W is aware of this, we're using their workers.
We, if it can. If it can, yes, it was discussed that they're amenable to not, you know, laid out.
So from someone that works with D P W every day, some child who makes this during my day job, you have to give them a schedule in advance?
Exactly.
I would just hope that we.
No, no, you have to work it out.
A couple of months in advance, this is what's going on, just so that we have it lined up.
They, they meet with them every two weeks. So, you know, during one of those meetings, Martha Jo can attend and say, this is, you know, now this has been approved. This is, this is what we, how should we do this?
That's why I was asking if it was immediate for purchase and things like that. Okay.
They're going to have to do it on vacations. They're gonna have to do it on vacations. And I guess if you check this, it's all totally, you never know.
It may be done incrementally.
Yeah, that sounds like it.
But it has to be done when the school's not in session. And they're available for all the time, so it's two different pieces there. Okay? Is there any further discussion? This was recommended unanimously by the BNF. Any further, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. And the final issue is to approve the advertising on the food service vehicle donated by Subway Chevrolet and.
Did everybody get it?
Did we get that in our packet or did?
Didn't come in our packet, just came to BNF.
What was it, advertise?
It's, it's.
We talked about this over.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's simply a, it'd be better to show you.
Yeah, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, Tony will get it up. But basically, we have to, we have to approve any advertising on the school property. Subway has donated, or at the lease of a vehicle for the purpose of moving food around, the food service vehicle, you know, is obsolete and needs to be replaced. They, they're gonna donate that for three years and they, they wanna have some recognition that they donated on the vehicle.
I didn't know what the advertising was.
It's, it's just.
It's courtesy of Subway.
It's not touchscreen.
Mine is.
Yeah, it's a touchscreen.
Yeah, like, just that.
Obviously, the old stuff.
No, that's.
No, it doesn't, it's down.
Got a single.
Oh, yeah.
The first, the first iteration had, you know, lost their food service, which is a whole side.
Oh, my God.
My name's blue, I said blue.
Yeah. So anyway, we do have to approve. Okay, we have to approve the, the.
I move that we, yes, I move that we approve the advertising of the food service vehicle. Still named by Subway Chevrolet.
Done it.
Is any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to updating the school building authority and the East Plaza School Project. As I stated earlier, the city is, is, is pursuing the Article ninety-seventh disposition. They will come before the city council sometime in January. If they approve it, it will then go to the state legislature through our representatives. And the timeline on that is that we, we need, they think it would be done, they would be able to take it up by, by Marsha Anko. The, tomorrow, the Dorn Whittier and our, our OPM, as well as the city building inspector and representatives from the city side will be touring St. Anne's to see if it's what, what work it might be or whether it needs code to be used to swing space. We don't have a date as of right now for the next school building committee meeting. We're having a hard time getting a location as well as everybody that needed to be there, there at the same time. The main thing that's gonna happen at that school building committee is they're gonna do what they call is a focusing.
Visioning.
Visioning, a visioning of, of style and, and for those of you who, who went through this at West Parish, it's really just a big, long, sort of discussion about whether you like this part or that part, or, you know, or how things would flow. And it's, it's, it's all theoretical, you know, but it just gives the, the designers some, some direction on, on the work that they need to do. Also, we will be going, the MSC, MSBA will be voting on our schematic design report to accept that on next Wednesday. Anything else?
No, just that we went in.
That we did go.
To the facilities assessment subcommittee, they were exceptionally pleased with the results of both the extent, the educational narrative and the correspondence of the spatial summary put together by the designers, very enthusiastic about what we have and they'll be, the board will be voting on that as most of, as Paul mentioned, on December one.
I have a couple of questions. Can you talk about the traffic study? Because I thought I read somewhere that it was happening in October. So is the traffic study being complete for the Redlands area?
I don't know. The, we, because we haven't had a building committee meeting, we haven't had the, a report on that one. There's a number of studies going on.
Okay.
And I don't know, I don't know if we, if it's complete, if we haven't been notified that it's complete.
So that's not part of the conversation going to MSBA next Wednesday, if that information's not needed yet?
No, no. We have to do a traffic study, you gotta understand, a traffic study basically just points out the problems and then they gotta come up with a way of fixing them.
No, I understand, I've done a traffic study before, I just thought that I'd read that it was happening in October, so I was just wondering if there was any results that we don't have yet.
They're, they're, they're also doing some, it was suggested, one of the things that was suggested by the board at, at the last meeting, MSBA, is they wanted to be sure that we did sound studies because of the proximity of the highway as well as air quality studies, so they're in the process of doing those also.
So that's just happening, we just don't have the results yet?
No, we don't have the results, they're, they're doing these studies and I don't, nobody's reported out to us the, any, any, you know, results.
And then I have a question about the lights. And the lights, the softball field lights.
Yes.
So you had mentioned in an article in the newspaper about Green Street, that we didn't have access to the Green Street property, or the, whatever we call it, the.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's leading some people to say that the lights can't be moved there if that's an option, because we don't have access to the property. So I just wanted you to clarify that, because I don't believe that that's the case, but I think your comment is being taken literally as opposed to the conversation that was held at the building committee, so if you can just explain that a little bit.
Okay, Green Street, off of actual Green Street, there's a little play, there's a playground and, and a glassed playground and there's parking there. It's, it's not a lot of parking, I think it's maybe twenty cars. That's there, we, we have, there's one there. And, and, and you, we have access at that one. We have access from Bond Road, but it's not, it's not, it's not really good, it's still with some hills and rocks. Where everybody, where they do peewee football and stuff there, people park across the street, which we, is not ours. Also, that, that road is not the border of our property. The Gloucester Crossing people actually own, I don't know how many feet, but some number of feet from the road up into the field. We don't own that.
Is there a sidewalk there?
There's a sidewalk that comes through from, from the playground, from the, from the parking lot that runs through there, that's, that's on our property, but there's, there's, so what I'm saying is a curb cut there at the obvious spot on, on, on Schoolhouse Road into, into the field is, we'd have to negotiate a, a easement with Gloucester Crossing or, you know, a different way to get in there. There are a number of points that we have access, but they're, they're not good, which would, would, but that's not, that doesn't have anything to do with whether the lights could be there, the lights could be.
No, I just heard a conversation with the mayor last week that someone thought that we wouldn't be able to put the lights up there, and I heard her say, yes, we could put the lights up there, but that was the direction we went in, so I was just trying to figure out, because I, I haven't been to the best couple building committee meetings and I read the minutes, I don't think they're very influential.
This is, this is a city's issue. The building committee is not gonna be deciding where the field's gonna go.
So, that was my next part, the building committee is not gonna decide the lights, the city is gonna decide.
The city is gonna decide where the, where the field gets replaced. They're, they're doing it, they, they're gonna decide, so I'm sure DPW will.
The best solutions. Thank you, I think that's all.
This school location, negotiations continue. The, there was a question about the Gloucester High School turnaround plan, so I included it in the packet, if you'd like to get a presentation and discuss it, we can plan a subsequent meeting, but I just wanted to put it in so everybody should be able to read it. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring up and tell?
Two things, so one is procedurally, I admit, it is still a little unclear, so it sounds like the CO detective thing is just dead unless there's, we'll maybe move forward. And so, I, you know, I wasn't at the BNF meeting, I'm surprised that there wasn't any fire department personnel there.
He's gonna come next week. Well, I don't know, Ray's gonna bring a report back.
Okay, so at this point, is there anything, you know, I don't wanna lose sight of this, but I wanna, you know, I don't want to miss an opportunity to revive, to keep us alive if that's where we're at, but it sounds like we're, with BNF will be taking this at least once more, then we'll come back to the committee, or I'm trying to figure, procedurally, what we're doing here.
Well, the, the committee felt they didn't have, they, they still need more information, so they didn't make a recommendation.
So I misunderstood, but that.
And we'll take it, but the information, we did have some information, the information was this not required, and that EPW feels that they are taking good, doing good maintenance on the boilers and they didn't see a need for it. So that's the information that we had. All right, so if we get information from the police or the fire or that, but we didn't make it this week.
Okay.
So it's not dead, it's just sleeping quietly for, till next week.
My other, my other question is, so it was brought to my attention that it's kind of a small issue, but now parents are coming up to me because they don't have, so committee files. So I had reached out to, not a school committee member, but as a guardian, to high school staff, the question about yearbook policies, specifically, what I'm told is a prohibition against students being allowed to use their own professionally taken senior portraits in the yearbook. And I made, but I realized part of the mistake is saying, oh, well, we used to be able to do that, and so how come in 2019 we can't do that? And now I have a lot of parents who are going back to me, yeah, why can't you, we pay a lot of money for these other, I need to spend the sitting fee, you must sit, so back in the, the bad old days when I was at school, you had to sit with the school's selected photographer, because they had, we had a deal with that and a lot of people who might not otherwise want to spend the, for the money of professional photography or might not be able to, to get, you know, quality pictures at a really reasonable price. And then everyone sat for those pictures, you can then decide whether you wanted to use those pictures or whether, you paid for it either way, then you can decide whether you're gonna use those pictures or use other pictures you wanted, because it was on the criteria. At some point, yes, that went away, now no matter what, the students are all being told, they have to use the pictures that were taken by the school photographer, and so, but the parents are saying, hey, you know, now that they know we used to be able to not do this, they wanna know why can't they have their professional photographs inserted into, so I would love if I could just get an answer, you know, so when this is asked of me, I can say, here's why we can't, or if they look at it and say, yeah, I guess we can, it's no big deal, that's fine too, but I'm at a loss, because again, we're being the outside, I'm just gonna, I don't understand why we can't either, but I'm not saying it was done frivolously, there might be a very good reason, that's not what it is, and I would love to get that reason, so I can share it, or it's cost.
We will, we will, we will, we will find out.
Yeah.
But I'm pretty sure the school committee has no policy on this.
I don't, I anticipate that, but.
I wanted to bring up the topic of the superintendent's evaluation. I didn't email him the other day and I spoke to Glenn tonight. I know the superintendent is retiring, however, we put forth a lot of goals that will lead into the district in improving and usually from this evaluation process, we learn a lot of information about the district, in other words, do we meet the target goals or not? So I, we haven't taken a vote whether or not we're gonna still follow through with the evaluation, so I think that's something we need to discuss as a committee. And then I'd like to discuss the opportunity of possibly getting at least, if we choose not to do the evaluation, because it really doesn't make sense to follow through with the full process, at least get a report from the superintendent on where we were at with the goals, more the student growth goals. At some point, it doesn't have to be tonight.
Well, point's very well, point's very well taken, but I, I would recommend that we review sometime after the new year, the district improvement plan, where we've been and what we are accomplishing. Quite frankly, any superintendent goals established were an outgrowth of the district improvement plan, and that really speaks about the district as opposed to the superintendent or who's occupied that particular position, they're virtually one of the same. So with the committee's permission, we can certainly begin to gather the data and the information, and even in snippets, not all at once, but we can present, again, the district improvement plan, which is gonna be extremely similar to the goals that I have set, and we can provide those responsibly.
I just don't wanna see this get caught up, because if you didn't announce your retirement last week, we would be discussing this now, because you would have had to have provided the documents to us during this time period, would we be evaluating here? So I just, I'm okay with it being in a couple of weeks or so, but I just don't want it to be this, I don't want this to be part of the district improvement plan, I want this to stay on track as we set goals, where are we with those goals? And like I said, it's more the student growth goals, so that we can get that information sooner than later and then not get lost or become part of the district improvement plan. I see that as, they're two separate processes. Like I said, we'd be discussing it probably tonight, and we're not, so I just would like the committee to take a vote, first of all, whether we're gonna do the evaluation and if we're not, what we can at least do to capture the information we would have received if we had done the evaluation, because I think it's very, very important. We have issues in two of our schools and the student growth goals are related to those schools and we're not talking about it. And I don't wanna be talking about this in February, I wanna be talking about this now while we still have six months of school left.
Can I follow on from what I was gonna say? Ask that, we have two new committee members coming on in January and I was going to ask for a presentation on our NPS scores in terms of where we are. I know we did it kind of on a school level by school level, I would like to see kind of like what we've had in the past, which is grade level. I'm curious as to what the trends are as our elementary schools are doing, you know, the levels at which they are, where does the, where does, where does everything fall off that the middle school is now in a, you know, tougher situation and the high school? Is it, you know, is it the test at different levels or, you know, what can we glean from those, from those results in terms of informing how we approach and, and how the middle school is probably already doing some of that work to think about, you know, where, where's the gap between what we used to be doing and what we're currently doing in terms of achievement? So I was hoping to have that in January.
So if we look at the goals, it talks about. No, it is not, but this is what.
I'm just making, this was.
We're not gonna take any action.
Mine was new business, mine was my suggestion.
I'd like to have this discussion at the next meeting and have it on the agenda then, so that we can determine how to move forward.
So I, I think that that is, you know, the, is, is the way we should move forward, but there's, there's some issues that I, I have about that too, so.
About?
Oh, just about the, the timeline of, of the evaluation has never made any sense to me, it all had to do with the contract. Shouldn't be, we should be evaluating them, you know, at the end of the year.
This is the end of the year, we would be evaluating them tonight?
No, this is the year, this is the year.
Contract, end of contract.
The goals we set go for the year, the goals that we set are not for the middle of the year, the goals are set for the end of the year.
Right.
And yeah, we're evaluating them in December, but that is because of the contract, not because, because this contract had to be in the, in January first. So that's why we value it in December, but the reality is, the. So that's why we value it in December, but the reality is the goals that we set are for June. So I'm just saying that we'll, we'll have this discussion in the next meeting about how we get reported out and what, what's been done. I don't have any problem with that.
I just don't wanna lose the valuable time.
Anything else? We are going to go into executive session. There are two items that we need to be updated on. And so the reasons for going into executive sessions are for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation involving a student disciplinary matter. And the second is for the purpose of investigating charges of criminal misconduct. We will come out of the executive session only to adjourn. So thank you very much. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Chairman, vote.
Yes.
Miss Prince? Yes. Miss Sweet? Yes. Mr. Foulbuss?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a five minute recess and return to the executive session.